I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmett Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, January 24, 2022. The time is 7:01 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Pandzika.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fayes.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Principal Dana Nasiakos has Mackenzie students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. We are so excited to be here for Mackenzie. Not only do we get to present to the Board of Education, but some of us get to stay up past our bedtime tonight. And that is very exciting. Tonight's special guests from Mackenzie are going to talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing this past month. At Mackenzie, we've been raising awareness and kindness throughout the month by our acts of kindness. We've also been doing activities for Red Week, which is respect and embracing differences. During Red Week, we learned more about what makes each of us unique. So tonight, our special guests will tell you a little bit about what we've been doing.
Hello, my name is Meyer. And my name is Meyer. And my act of kindness this month was giving a thank you card to my teacher, Ms. Gremley.
Hi, thank you for inviting me. My name is Julia Beth Gilboy. My act of kindness this month was I read to my little brother Alex.
My name is Charlotte Lee. My act of kindness this month was making a card to doctors and hospitals.
My name is Andy Olson. My act of kindness is we was, I mean. I know what Red Week means to me. It means to respect every difference. If we were all the same, it would be boring.
During Red Week, I learned. My name is Tommy Olson, and during Red Week, I learned to respect every difference.
My name is Rachel Gilboy. During Red Week, I learned you should respect others, and it's okay if you don't like their ideas because they're all different.
My name is Henry One. During Red Week, I learned about some things that makes me special.
Hi, my name is Annabelle Godd. I am unique because I have artistic things.
Hi, my name is Samuel Lee. I like that I am really nice, and I am unique because I am very athletic.
Hi, my name is Vivian Rogers, and I like that I include everybody and respect every difference. And I am special because I have golden hair on the end of my hair.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here and for all of those kind acts. Thank you so much. I'd love to share with you the artwork behind me. Mackenzie students provided the amazing artwork in the boardroom this month. First graders created snowmen collages, making snowmen profiles and adding various embellishments. First graders also created tanglebird drawings after listening to Tanglebird by Bernard Lodge. Third graders studied Matisse using his paper cutout technique to create geometric bowls and colorful paper collages. Third graders also studied negative and positive shape, space, and balance to create paper collages. Notan refers to the Japanese concept of balance between light and dark. Third grade, oop, pardon me. Third graders cut out black and white geometric shapes in symmetrical and asymmetrical mirrored designs. Fourth graders studied six different artistic styles. Realism, Impressionism, Pointillism, Cubism, Surrealism, and Pop Art. Fourth graders designed floral drawings using three artistic styles of their choice and a variety of materials. Their inspirations came from sketching flowers in the Mackenzie Garden this fall. At this point, before proceeding with our meeting, I would like to pause for a moment of silence in remembrance and honor of a dear and beloved Mackenzie staff member who passed away last week. Kate Hillbrant passed away after experiencing a medical seizure. Kate was an incredible member of our Mackenzie school team and served in our Comprehensive Needs Program. Ms. Hillbrant created a deep impact on the lives of the students and staff with whom she worked, and she is dearly remembered and missed by many. Turn it to you for a moment of student recognition. Dr. Kremis Goli.
Thank you. We do have a very special student with us who's joining us online this evening, who we would like to recognize. We were going to save this for our administrative report, but thought it might be a good time now to recognize the student and allow her to get back to her studies and evening of fun as well. We are really proud to announce this evening that our digital media and IGS teacher Liz Zawa at High Press Middle School was proud to share that sixth grader Ezra Frazier's final IGS project, which was a short film entitled "If It Was You", has won the Award of Best Art Film at the GEG Chicagoland Film Festival. Her film was chosen from hundreds of submissions from students ranging from kindergarten all the way through grade 12. She will be honored and accept her award at an official screening of the winning films in February. The Board presents a certificate to celebrate and honor Ezra's success. We've linked the film as well and shared that with the Board. I know many of you have watched it and enjoyed it, as have we. Very powerful piece. Ezra, congratulations. Well done, and thank you.
Congratulations. I seek a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the December 13, 2021 Board of Education meeting and the January 13, 2022 Special Meeting of the Board of Education.
I have a second.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minute? All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Yay. The motion carries by general consent. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the Board. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Do we have anybody online?
Not.
Okay, you do not. I will move to Board reports, and Mr. Pandzika will start with Facilities Development.
The Facilities meeting was held as part of the Committee of the Whole meeting, and we discussed the updates on this summer's projects and the upcoming appropriations that we're going to be approving today for moving forward on those projects. And then we started discussing next year's projects at the beginning process.
Terrific, thank you. Mr. Caesaretti, School Finals?
Oh, thank you. All right, I have quite a bit to report. So at the Committee of the Whole, we discussed a number of things. We started with the fiscal year 2023 Budget Calendar and Resolution. Mr. Boltmeyer presented the Fiscal Year Budget Calendar Resolution. The Board will vote on the official fiscal year and budget process at this meeting. We talked about debt certificates and the February issuance of those. Mr. Boltmeyer presented the Operating Summary Timeline and 40 pages of draft resolution documents received from legal counsel. The resolution authorizes not to exceed 6.85 million of debt certificates will be presented for approval at this meeting. The target is to obtain 6.5 million in new money with the caveat to payback within a decade. The annual principal and interest is about 998,000. Included in that amount is a 0.5% cushion in the interest. Elizabeth Hennessy of Raymond James provided a timeline to move quickly to take advantage of steady rates and sales. The Board approves this resolution at this meeting, and the sale should occur on February 2 to lock in the interest rate. An update will be, ah, excuse me, an update will be provided at the February Committee of the Whole. We then talked about Senate Bill 508. Mr. Boltmeyer stated that Senate Bill 508 passed effective for the 2021 tax levy. Bill mandates the county add prior year refunds on top of board-approved tax levy each year. District 39 refunds from November 1, 2020 to October 31, 2021 are calculated to be 1.090 million. Cook County Treasurer, though, has issued their own calculation, which is quite a bit less, at 771,000, with the difference being around $319,000. Mr. Boltmeyer met in December with, I believe, an attorney for the assessor and the Nutria Area Business Officials, who all received six-figure differences from the County Treasurer's office. Attorneys are seeking clarifications for these discrepancies. Mr. Boltmeyer reported District 39, 2020, actual tax extension total was 58,476,991. Adding in the 771,000, which is 1.32% of the prior total, or 1 million, if you like, and if you can state this right. So we're going with if the treasurer's numbers are right, it would add in another 771,000. And if our numbers are right, it's another million, so we'll see how that goes. Mr. Boltmeyer stated options for the Board members are to remain status quo and take no action, and the 771,000 would be added to the levy. The Board can also abate part or all of the money. However, that resolution has to be filed by April 1, 2022. We also discussed a supplemental debt service levy. Mr. Boltmeyer stated the administration is asking the Board to approve a resolution to capture supplemental debt service levy for 2021. He noted this is a way to pay back bonds issued. The debt service extension base for the tax year 2020 was 1,569,150, the amount for the bonds issued in the spring of 2020. Mr. Boltmeyer explained, as the CPI becomes known, the extension base grows in small amounts each year and can be used to pay off the principal and interest in each tax year. The total amount that could be captured through 2024 is between 220,000 and 225,000. If the Board opted not to pass this resolution, the district would have to cover the principal and interest in existing amounts on the debt service bond. We also talked about the Teachers Retirement System Supplemental Savings Plan. Mr. Boltmeyer stated that the TRS is offering a supplemental Section 457 Retirement Savings Plan to all members. The law covering the creation of this plan requires all school districts to participate. However, participation requires Board approval. The creation and attempted implementation of this supplemental savings plan has been done with little consideration of the impact it has on school districts. District 39 uses TSA Consulting to manage current supplemental retirement offers, of which there are 20 different options offered to employees. Attorneys are working with TRS to resolve issues with their plan. Attorneys recommend the Board approve the program and have the superintendent, the special, join the program at a later date. Oh, we also, Mr. Boltmeyer provided us a readout of the annual rates of return for the TRS fund, which was enlightening, and let's see, stated that, what else? I think that's it. All right, thank you.
Very full report.
Right.
Thank you. We will move to strategy. Mr. Schneider-Fayes.
So regarding COVID impacts, Dr. Kremis Goli stated that the administration anticipated adjustments to mitigation strategies in January due to access to the vaccines. Based on the surge, the district is not looking at adjusting strategies at schools. The administration is grateful to continue in-person instruction, as am I, with current protocols in place and continue to follow the best practices as recommended by the Cook County Department of Public Health. Mitigation strategies, we all know, include distancing, six feet apart during unmasked lunchtimes, continuing with outdoor recess as much as we can, although recently the weather's been too cold to eat or play outside, consistent masking in all school environments for all individuals regardless of vaccination status, increased ventilation and adherence to the IDPH, that's the Illinois Department of Public Health, and the Cook County Department of Public Health Guidelines for Quarantine and Isolation of Close Contacts. The district offered shield testing for students and staff three times each week. Testing's also offered through township partners at Marie Murphy and Glenn Constance School. Vaccination booster clinics are being offered in the area on February 12. Members expressed reporting their utmost appreciation for volunteers assisting with shield testing and keeping schools staff, staff to remain open for students and for the nurses' diligence in processing cases. Regarding the District Strategic Advisory Team Subcommittee, Goal One, Student Achievement and Growth, Mr. Pandzika reported that he is on that Subcommittee. The Subcommittee is discussing key performance indicators, or KPIs, and some potential ideas for KPIs around homework. He opened the issue of what's expected or recommended regarding homework time to present feedback for his Subcommittee on behalf of the Board and Administration. Board members felt as their role is not to determine homework time. Dr. Kremis Goli noted, rule of thumb is 10 minutes per grade. While the district has a policy regarding the philosophy of homework, there's no specific policy directing homework. Some members felt this discussion should be part of the process of the DSTAT Subcommittee work, and others felt it's a decision for the superintendent and administration. And that's it?
Thank you. Great. We'll move to Liaison Reports, starting with Mrs. Kim with the CRC.
Thank you. So I attended the meeting last month, this month, and the group is moving along on their projects. And so there's really not much to report substantively. But I just want to say I was so happy to be able to meet everybody and some new members, and I feel so energized by, you know, the volunteer work that everyone is doing in our community. So it's really great. Thanks.
Terrific. I believe they have a survey out that, oh, communities or school members may have seen. Mr. Pandzika, Educational Foundation.
Yes, I attended the Zoom meeting of the District 39 Educational Foundation Wednesday, the 19th. They discussed that they've been having some problems with their website. They're working through those details, but it looks like they're going to end up probably revamping the website, and they think they can handle that through their current budget. But they're in the early stages of identifying what needs to be done. I guess the website's 10 years old, and a lot of the software that's on the website is no longer supported. So they need some work on that. The big item coming up is a virtual bingo night, which is February 26. So they're encouraging people to sign up. Last year's virtual night was a big success, and they're expecting to follow basically the same protocol this year. Their paddle classic was rescheduled from January to March 12, and the people that had already signed up for that will be able to continue to be available for March 12. And then they mentioned that their budget, they had a little bit of extra money in their budget because they were unable to find a District 39 teacher to support the Lab 39 Initiative, which is the science, not quite science, Lymphiad Program. So they're moving forward with that, and obviously would like to have support if they could find it. And their next meeting is February 16.
Great, thank you. I'll go back, we're going to go back and forth a little bit. Mrs. Kim for IASB.
Thank you. So the Illinois Association of School Boards launched a new program called IASB Advocacy Fridays, which is basically a webinar on the last Friday of each month, starting with this Friday, in which IASB governmental relations staff and guest speakers will provide special briefings and information on advocacy to help school board members such as us represent schools locally in Springfield and in DC.
Mr. Pandzika, back to you for the District Strategic Advisory Team.
Yes, I'm on the Subcommittee that's particularly focused on Goal One, which is academic performance. We met last week and went through the remaining five potential ideas for KPI. And we're talking about having another meeting before the next large group meeting, which is in two weeks.
And Mrs. Kim and Mr. Caesaretti, any updates on the Willmett Village intergovernmental operation?
We have our next meeting, I think, scheduled for March 1st, is that right? So until then, not a lot going on.
Okay. Great, well, let's move to the legislative update then. That's me, that's you. Keeping you on.
Okay, just a couple of quick items. There are some bills circulating in committees addressing teacher staffing shortages, which I'll bring up in more detail as they mature, as they go through the process. And then this afternoon, the Governor vetoed HB 2778, which you will recall is the school employee benefit and wage protection bill, which required districts to provide unlimited COVID administrative days to any school employees to be used for all COVID-related absences, like quarantining and testing, so that employees will not have to use benefits. The Governor's Office reached a compromise with the Illinois Education Association, the Illinois Federation of Teachers, and other stakeholders about how to handle sick leave related to COVID, and also wage security, which will be presented in the form of a new bill in the coming days. Thank you.
Wanting that, I'll turn it to Dr. Kremis Goli for information items. Got my notes. The Board has underwritten communication, the Board has received communication from Claire Parker, who shared a link to an NPR physician interview expressing viewpoints and recommendations. Communication was received from Ivana Uzelik, stating World Health Organization's chief scientist, Sumaya Swamanathan, excuse me, reported there is no evidence to support that adolescents in good health need an extra dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Under administrative announcements, we did recognize our student who received an award. At the top of the meeting, we recognized sixth grader Ezra Frazier, whose final IGS project, a short film entitled "If It Was You", won the Award of Best Art Film at the GEG Chicagoland Film Festival. Congratulations again to Ezra and to her teacher Liz Zawa for leading through that. She was selected among hundreds of applicants in kindergarten through grade 12. An update on COVID protocol, as was discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting as well. We continue to closely monitor case counts, community rates, and transmission, as well as updates in COVID-19 school guidance issued by IDPH and ISBE. We certainly have received quite a few of updates in January. We had, prior to winter break, expected that we may be able to be looking at mitigation adjustments, starting to lift some of those potentially, and unfortunately with the surge, that hasn't been possible. In fact, we needed to double down on some of our distancing procedures and make sure that our students at lunchtime when they were unmasked had appropriate distancing. Our goal there is always not only to maintain health and safety for our students, but to limit quarantines as much as possible. And we've been really successful at that, despite an increase in case count. Throughout these first few weeks of January with the surge, the number of students who have needed to be quarantined based on school exposure has been really, really minimal. So we're really happy to report that. Nonetheless, within our schools, our mitigation strategies have remained in place. We're eager to have the opportunity in the future to look at making some adjustments there, but we're not there yet, and the Health Department is not recommending any adjustments either. We have needed to make a few adjustments to our athletic programs and the competition schedule, especially in those first two weeks coming back from January. We did have some competitions that needed to be canceled. Athletes were really disappointed with that, as were we and their parents as well. But we are very grateful for our athletes' participation in practice. They were able to continue to practice. They had some wonderful end-of-the-season games that happened within the school, and some of our other athletes have since been able to return to the competitions. They've also participated in shield testing weekly, and so we want to say thank you to our students, their coaches, and their families for supporting that effort. It really has helped to maintain those opportunities for our students. Beyond that, we continue to closely monitor and follow the guidance from IDPH, ISBE, and the Cook County Department of Public Health. We did receive a pretty significant change that was issued in isolation and quarantine lengths, moving from the original, from the last of 10 days down to five days. That really does align with CDC and their recommendations for the shortened isolation and quarantine lengths. We've been able to put that into place and have had really good success with that. So again, thank you to our school nurses, our administrators, and our families for adhering to those recommendations. We do expect some additional adjustments in guidance over the next couple of weeks, and we'll continue to incorporate that new guidance into our practice as we have come to understand implementing those best practices as recommended by the IDPH, ISBE, and the Cook County Department of Public Health really does help us to maintain safe and healthy schools for our students and for our staff. And so we expect that we will continue to do that and appreciate the Board's support for that, and really, the community's support of doing all that we can to maintain the health and safety of our schools and in-person instruction. We do expect in February to be able to make some additional considerations, and so we will keep the Board apprised of that as we learn more. Any questions about any of that? I will point out, if you look on our COVID Metrics page, we continue to report the cases that occur on site, and we've created a couple of new ways of looking at the data there just to make sure that everyone has access to the information they need. We continue to notify people if they're identified as a close contact or if the classroom their child is part of experiences a positive case on campus. Okay, moving on then. In terms of registration, we're about ready to launch registration for the upcoming school year. We will launch tomorrow, and we're really excited this year to be able to launch everyone at the same time. So any new student, returning student, those who want to enroll in kindergarten, and the KEEP 39 program will all KEEP 39 program will all have the opportunity to start that registration tomorrow. So some communications will be sent directly to families, and then we'll continue to remind families through March, really through the end of the year. But for those families really interested in the enrichment program for kindergarten, we are telling families that they are guaranteed a spot, provided they register by March 1st. Thereafter, we'll start a waitlist, and if space is available, we will open those sections and those spots for them as well. We do expect every school to be offering KEEP 39, and we are very hopeful that every student who wants to participate in that program will be able to. Yes, Frank?
Especially on the KEEP 39, or specifically on KEEP 39, is there a proactive reach out to the community? Because I mean, obviously for kindergarten, so in some cases, it might be their first child, whatever, so is there a proactive program?
Yes, in fact, our principals just last week, I believe it was last week, correct, on the 19th of January, our principals each hosted an informational evening session. Information was sent out to preschools, posted in all forms of media. I know that Leo blasted out some communications as well to try and ensure that everyone had information about that event. And so there's information on each of our school websites as well to make sure that families know the opportunity not only to register for kindergarten, but for the enrichment program as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Similarly, as we transition kids into kindergarten, we're also preparing to transition students into fifth grade. So as the board is aware, implementing strategies to better support successful transitions from fourth to fifth and from sixth to seventh grade for our students and parents is an important strategy within our strategic plan goal number four. Over the upcoming months, we're excited to launch our fifth-grade transition activities. On February 1st, we will begin to transition fourth to fifth grade with a kickoff webinar outlining the transition process and highlighting the world language selection as the first step in the process. Following the kickoff, additional short topic-specific webinars will be scheduled to help fourth-grade families better understand the aspects of high creps school, such as the structure of the houses and the teams, as well as the various creative arts classes. These have been planned based on information gathered from a transition survey sent earlier this year to our current fifth-grade students and families. Yes, Frank?
A follow-up, it's related. This upcoming transition from sixth grade to seventh grade, unfortunately, the fifth and sixth graders will have the joy of being COVID for their entire high creps career, wearing masks, et cetera. So the transition from sixth grade to seventh grade will probably be more significant. Hopefully, there won't be as many protocols, and they'll be moving forward. So is there a similar proactive strategy that, like you've mentioned, for fifth grade for the, if I can get it right, sixth grade to seventh grade, especially since this year will be a much bigger-than-normal transition for those?
Yes, absolutely. There are, there will be some activities planned. Those typically start a little bit later, because although there is a change in school, the biggest transition, what we hear from our families, is that big transition from elementary to middle school. But yes, there are some activities that will be planned later on to help our sixth graders prepare for that relatively significant transition to the junior high school as well.
Yeah, in particular, I was just, I was thinking about it, and it's like the two years that they have in high creps, which is normally when you get used to moving around more, interacting more, was curtailed because of COVID. So that transition to junior high will be even more significant, but I'd like there's some proactive programs.
Just a note, our students at High Crest Middle School are moving throughout their classrooms this year. Last year was a little different, but you are right. It is a-
Not normal. That, you know, it's reacting to the world, but it's not the normal environment.
Principals, is there anything else that I'm missing in that regard? Kelly and Kate are both with us, along with our elementary principals this evening as well. Anything I'm missing? All right, we'll continue to keep the board apprised of that work, though, as we progress through second semester. Thank you. Atlantic Research Partners follow-up, we're really pleased to receive the presentation of the Atlantic Research findings at the board's special meeting last Thursday, January 13th. Our staff have received the same presentation, and we're eager to begin our next steps in planning. We've started with an administrative council review of the major themes and next steps. As discussed during the presentation, much of this work has already begun through various teams and committees throughout our district. Thus, our first step really is to clarify those major themes and findings, which groups are responsible for tackling each of those areas and for promoting this work. For example, we know that our MTSS committee right now has been working throughout this year and will continue to work on a variety of these themes. And they will use the recommendations of ARP to help guide their work as they plan for their goals at the end of the school year. The Student Services Department will be establishing a Student Services Steering Committee to help prioritize the work and guide the district through the next steps as well. And as we work to create that steering committee, the Student Services Department will also be working on special education continuing services and refining the department handbook to better reflect and address some of the identified themes. So there's a lot of work happening. We're also planning for professional development, which will incorporate some of the identified areas of need as well, and we'll focus on that not only this year, but as we look toward the start of the new school year as well. So we're excited to continue our ongoing improvement processes aligned to the strategic plan. We're grateful that we now have two different kind of looks at our district. They seem to inform each other quite a bit, and we'll use that as we plan for our next steps. In that same regard, we are planning for a mid-year strategic plan update for February. So next month, we're planning for a presentation, just kind of an update on where we are in each of the action steps that we've identified for this year. This update will be provided to the board and the community with a progress update related to those action plans, again, that were identified for this school year. And then finally, in terms of announcements, we have the Ramona bid approval. This is just a reminder that the bid for Ramona, excuse me, for the Ramona window replacement project is just a few days before the February 14th committee of the whole meeting. Given the lengthy lead time in securing many of the construction-related materials, including windows, the board will be asked to approve bids at the special meeting at the committee of the whole. Typically, bid approvals happen at a board meeting, so I did want to just mention this. The earlier board approval will provide the winning bidders an additional two weeks in lead time. We think under the current circumstances, that will be beneficial. And then finally, we always report on our Freedom of Information Act requests. The district received FOIA requests from Gerald Gomes of Chicagoland Laborers District Council Management Corporation Committee requesting copies of bid results as read from the bid opening on November 23rd, 2021, for Harper Elementary School, Summer Work 2022. From Jeff Axarod requesting reports of positive COVID-19 cases for students and staff between December 26th and January 1st, with an amended period of December 19th through December 25th. Again, a lot of that information is already on our metrics page, so those interested can follow along there. And Ross Widener and Jonathan Bag of ABC7 Chicago requested documentation of remote learning equipment reported as missing, damaged, broken, stolen, or otherwise unavailable for use. Those are our three FOIs, and that concludes our administrative reports. All right, thank you very much. I am going to turn it back to you for annual business. Thank you, and I will turn it actually to Cory Boltemeyer, who has a number of topics to discuss this evening.
All right. I will share my screen for the first topic, the issuance of debt certificates. Later in the meeting, we will ask the board to approve a resolution to authorize issuance of up to 6.85 million in debt certificates. I just wanted to share with everyone, this is the most recent debt structure proposal I've received from Lieutenant Seaton Raymond James. Where we're at as of late last week, we would potentially be looking at about 6.689 million in new money from the transaction. This does include about a 25 basis point rate cushion, and it falls within all the parameters we had previously talked about, key being repayment within 10 years and keeping that principal and interest annual payment at 1 million or less. As I scroll to page two, you just kind of see a, here's the proposed debt structure. The green is the existing debt certificates that we're still paying on at about $800,000 a year, and then in the fall, when we do the refunding transaction, the green continues for a few more years, and then the navy blue there is what the new debt certificates would look like. As I mentioned, the annual payment would stay within a $1 million per year parameter. Couple of key dates, tonight, we're asking for board approval to authorize a transaction. Last Friday, we did our ratings call with Moody's. Two more days, we should find out the district's bond rating for this particular issuance. And then in about a week and a half, on February 2nd, we would sell the bonds to the market via competitive bid. Is there, are there any questions?
I had a comment, not a question. The presentation that you put together and that you used, I thought it was very professional, and I enjoyed reading through it, so hopefully the bond people did also.
Thank you. I will just add that the, much like our audit being up over 100 pages, the public official statement includes our audit of 100 pages, and as Dr. Kremiscoli found out last Friday, it's probably a good 100 pages at least of just every information. I mean, it covers the village, the district, everything that we've done in our history. So if anybody wanted to find out about District 39, they couldn't say that we didn't offer it. So, all right. The next thing on the agenda is the supplemental debt service levy, as we talked about a couple weeks ago. When the district issued the 2020 bonds in the spring of 2020, the debt service extension base was only at 1.569 million. That number grows by, each year by CPI. Now that we've got into January, we finalized that CPI number for calendar year 2021. So now we're up to 1.67 million. I've highlighted it in orange on this summary document. As you can see, that now exceeds what our annual debt service amount is for every year in that total debt service due column. The difference that we're asking the board to approve is the numbers in yellow. With this document, should the board approve it tonight? We go on file with Cook County, and then each year when they put together the final tax extension, this gives them the authorization to go up and collect the full amount for principal and interest on this bond series. The yellow amount is the additional amount that our vote, the vote today would authorize them. I will just point out that the line item that's 21,966, by voting and then us filing with Cook County, that's the one amount that we would definitively be locking in. The ones in the next three years, they're technically, they're locked in if we do nothing, but the board would still have future flexibility like they always do in the fall when they pass the tax levy. So yes, we are filing it, but we still retain flexibility going forward in future years. All right, the next item up is the McKenzie bid results for the 2022 air conditioning So last Wednesday, we had a bid opening with Nichols and Associates. They're with me, and we had lots of competitive bids, but it was a nice response, given some of the challenges that organizations and companies are facing with COVID, as we found out, I mean, not just what we experienced here, but even in the construction industry. It was, from what we had heard, challenging for some of these companies to even get somebody to be able to bring the bid to the place. I think there may have even been a, as you see, there was a couple that had attended the pre-bid, which is the list on this summary document. I think a couple of me have not even been able to make that because of that. Nonetheless, we were pleased with the bid opening, the results, the amounts for the base bid came in a couple hundred thousand below our budgeted expectation. So we were pleased with that. We feel like we've got three quality contractors to work with us on this McKenzie project. Just to review really quickly, we have the base bid, which is primarily the adding a chiller and then connecting up air conditioning in all the remaining classrooms at McKenzie. Alternate one includes a partial roof replacement, which is focused over the two gyms in the auditorium, so it's a pretty sizable area. We've included in here. Alternate two includes a pretty sizable amount of electrical work that's down below and across based on below the main floor, and then many of the electrical panels within the building. And then alternate three is, as part of adding a chiller and some of the extra components to this project, the commed equipment that's located just outside the building is quite old, and with the additional electricity that might be flowing through there, they finally decided to update or upgrade their equipment on the McKenzie property. There is a possibility that the district may incur some extra cost as they, as commed connects from the street into our building. The exact path that commed will take isn't 100% yet. The reason that we wanted to put alternate three out there is we wanted to have whichever contractor wanted to shoreline, we wanted to have firm pricing of what we may end up getting charged. We think that things are in good enough shape that alternate three will end up just falling off, and we will end up having to pay that. And then alternate four was another consideration for some additional temperature control work in parts of the, some of the equipment, air handlers and air conditioning equipment on the roof, in the areas that are not impacted by this particular project. And when we sat down with our staff internally, we felt like this, the items that we have in place were still in good shape, and this was, you know, maybe a little bit of an overreach. And so we felt like the proper thing to do was to reject alternate four. So in a little bit, we'll be asking for approval, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy All right. The next item is the fiscal year 2023 budget calendar resolution. This is an annual vote that the board does related to the budget calendar. It's just approving a public budget calendar and a resolution establishing the new fiscal year. I think the key highlights to our budget process, at least from, I take a step back, is as we get into the spring and then wrapping up in August with board approval, our District 39 specific process offers the board and the public several opportunities to review and offer feedback as we go through the various stages of the budget process. And the last item is the teachers' retirement system supplemental savings plan. So the District 39 is a part of TRS. Due to some legislation that was passed, we are mandated to join this new supplemental savings plan. However, we find ourselves at a situation where legal counsel is advising us not to join quite yet, hopeful that some more changes can be made to the plan documents. So what we are asking the board to do tonight is approve the district to participate in the plan at a future date, while also giving authorization to Dr. Kremiscoli and I to review and sign off in a participation agreement sometime in the future. When that date in the future will be, as of now, we're kind of what the recommendation is, is to wait until TRS mandates, sets a deadline by when we need to join. That date has not yet been set, but once it does, I think that will move the process along pretty quickly. And just so everyone knows, we have worked with legal- And just so everyone knows, we have worked with legal counsel throughout this process. And before we were to sign any document that would change from what is in the board packet tonight to what would be the final version, we would, that would be legal counsel reviewed as well.
And just for the public's indication, we've talked about all this in committee meetings. Surprising that there are no extra questions.
Thank you so much for all of that information on so many items. Terrific. So we will, I'll turn it to Dr. Kremis Scolia for board policy review.
There are many policy updates for policies in section two, three, and four. Many of these were revised by press this fall. And as a result, we do have reviewed and revised these policy. Many thanks to Dr. Blackey for helping with that. And Nancy has also helped this time around, so we appreciate her careful review as well. They've been reviewed by our board's attorney. It's not all of what press recommends is always recommended by our attorney. So we always like to do a quick review there as well. They're recommended for first reading this evening. There's a lot there, so we do anticipate there may be some questions or comments for us to dig in a little further on before going to second reading and final approval.
Yes, there was a lot there. I found two things, one that, well, two things. Two colon 200, Board of Education meetings in particular, I think under the special meetings category. It looks like notification to board members had to be by snail mail or personally delivered and excluded email. Is that intentional? Is that in order to meet requirements? Am I reading it wrong or is that just an admission that could be adopted?
Looking to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was reading through it, it's like, okay, I don't really want it that way. I don't really want it that way. Oh, no, I may have read it wrong, but it may just be one of those. When you read through.
Are you thinking, Frank, about the first paragraph there? Or is there another part that?
Give me one second.
It says by mail.
It says by giving notice thereof in writing stating the time, place, and purpose of the meeting to remaining board members by mail at least 48 hours or by personal service. Oh, because the electronic means is crossed off.
Writing and email are not exactly the same thing. And so it, you know, there may be a reason we can't do it with email, but if you have registered emails that you have on record.
Yes.
Probably okay, but it's right now it's a minor omission. And then four colon 170. I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but the entire paragraph related to insurance, student insurance was stricken. And I don't understand, I just want to understand why that was removed or was it moved or what caused that to be eliminated. That's page three or four and one colon 170.
Saying four colon 170?
Four colon 170, page three at the bottom, student insurance.
So again, I would need to look into that. It doesn't align with press, which is probably why it was stricken, but where it would go is what I'm hearing you ask. Sorry. It was, I believe, struck because it doesn't align with what's in press. And so I would need to go back and look, answer your question about, is it located somewhere else? I don't have that in my database, but I can look at that.
Okay, yeah, because it's, I know, you know, we don't endorse it, but required students, they have some kind of insurance thing, like a policy that's done. So did it move someplace else?
When it says may designate, it doesn't say that we do designate or that it is.
Well, yeah, but the last sentence, students participating in athletics, streaming or must have school academic insurance. So what, the first part was just, we give them some clue of where they could go for it, and that makes sense. We don't want to take responsibility for that. But the second part does say must, so I don't know.
Well, it says, or a parent or guardian statement in writing that the student is covered under a family loss insurance claim.
Right, yes, but.
Which I think is part of the forms that parents fill out when they register their child for an athletic program. So let us get clarification, but I do think that first sentence refers to us offering accident insurance. I'm not sure that as a district we do that. I'm looking at Cory. I know we've spent some time talking about that, but I don't believe that's an offering of the board.
Yeah, no, that wasn't, that wasn't the point. It was the second half where they have to have it. Like you said, it's part of the form, but where is the policy that says there has to be a form that has been on it? I didn't know how to find it.
Probably under athletics, but I can believe that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other board members? Yes.
So for four, one, six, oh, cold tar sealant. Now, I believe that the reason there's a disclosure is because there are carcinogens like at a particular time in there are other districts in the township that had actually banned the use of that. So I just think we might want to consider requiring an alternative sealant that does not mean. I know that, yeah, if you need materials on that, I can. Probably should have done that before we did.
That your, do you have anything else?
That was it.
Okay. I have a few from Ms. Stone that I'm going to share, and then I have a couple. So she directed us to look at four colon 175.
Give us a second.
Yep, I'm going to.
Look at the number again.
Maybe the very last one.
Four colon 175. Don't have it up either. But she said, before the section screening, she was encouraging us to think about having a phrase, something like, where feasible, meetings that include convicted sex offender should be conducted remotely. She was wondering if something like that was wise in also recommending that at eight colon 30, so a similarly worded phrase, at the end of the subheading convicted sex offender. Again, her recommendation was thinking about where feasible, meetings that include a convicted sex offender should be conducted remotely. Let's just throw that out there on her behalf. And also in eight colon 30, where it's.
Sorry, eight colon 30? No. Oh, the future one? Hold that one until we get there.
I will hold that one, never mind. I had a question, if nobody else does, under two colon 220, page four of four. It was about board meetings participating remotely. And when I read it, it made me think that we could have a board member participate remotely in a way that is different than I was currently understanding. So I just wanted to get others.
I believe, and I'll have to do some additional research, but I believe there is an allowance for a board member to participate remotely if they're called away from the meeting place physically due to some certain exceptions. Vacation, personal reasons don't count, but if it's a business-related responsibility, that calls a board member out of town, they're allowed to participate remotely, I think. But let me look into that a little bit further.
That'd also be illness. I mean, the whole quarantine thing.
So it was allowed during the emergency and then it was removed as an option. But as I read this, it didn't seem so specific.
We should put it back.
So that would be my recommendation, if it in accordance with the law.
Let us look into that a little bit further.
Okay. And then I just thought, was something missing? I think maybe I didn't read this correctly in three colon 40, page one of two. It seems like maybe there was the end of the sentence missing. So under preparing, it says the superintendent is authorized to develop. And then also, the next one, the superintendent may.
Oh, it looked like the enumeration is removed and you get rid of the two that's developing. So it's developed administrative procedures.
That's correct. One long sentence.
Or one long, there you go. Thank you. That's helpful.
Hard to see it that way.
Yes, I did, that, my brain did not work that way. Thank you. Any other comments on the policy?
As a procedural issue, given those comments, which ones of these, are they all in as first reading in the consent agenda or do we need to review that?
It's all first reading. It is still first reading. We will bring back to the board some additional information and then make any revisions that may be beneficial then. We may choose to bring back some for discussion at the committee of the whole meeting under old business, just to allow board members the opportunity to discuss again before we get to the February meeting, if at that point, or if we don't have all of the information researched by the committee of the whole meeting, we may simply need to do a second reading and then a third reading in March before we look for approval.
I want to make sure I do the most correct.
Yes. It is still first reading, so we should, we can approve as first reading. Thank you.
Great. And so should we move to the future review?
Just a second. So the report of the special education audit from Atlanta Research Partners recommended that the board adopt a policy detailing expectations for parent communication to school staff. We've done a bit of a policy review and we want to point out and ask the board to spend some time looking at policy 830, which we believe begins to address this need. We may need to do some additional professional development in this regard. And there may be some revisions that the board may wish to see there as well. So at this point, we simply wanted to point the board to that policy, provide it to you as our first step in attempting to address this. And at the February committee of the whole meeting, we'd like to discuss the existing policy and any revisions the board may wish to see in light of the ARP presentation.
Thank you for doing that right away.
You did say that Erin had some feedback in even just looking at that? Or would we prefer to hold that for the committee of the whole meeting?
Um, I think we can hold it. Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so this brings us to the second opportunity for public comments. Is anybody online ready to speak? So that takes us to the action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Hey, Mr. Panzika, let's proceed.
I move to approve the personnel report dated January 24th, 2022. I move to adopt the attached resolution establishing the school district 2023 fiscal year and direct the superintendent to prepare a tentative budget and to approve the attached budget planning calendar. I move to approve as first reading of the Board of Education Policies, two colon 200, Board of Education Meetings, two colon 220, Board of Education Meeting Procedures, two colon 240, Board of Education Policy Development, two colon 250, Access to District Public Records, two colon 265, Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure, three colon 40, Superintendent, three colon 50, Administrative Personnel Other Than the Superintendent, three colon 60, Administrative Responsibility of the Building Principal, four colon 10, Fiscal and Business Management, four colon 16, Identity Protection, four colon 60, Purchases and Contracts, four colon 80, Accounting and Audits, four colon 130, Free and Reduced Price Food Services, four colon 140, Waiver of Student Fees, four colon 150, Facility Management and Building Programs, four colon 160, Environmental Quality of Buildings and Grounds, four colon 170, Safety, and four colon 175, Convicted Child Sex Offender Screening Notifications. I move to approve accounts payable for bills listed between December 14th, 2021 and January 24th, 2022 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $629,630.65. O and M Fund, $97,038.2. Transportation Fund, $123,812.67. Capital Projects, $351,312.64. Port Fund, $37,127. Total All Funds, $1,238,920.98. I move to approve the manual checks issued between December 14th, 2021 and January 24th, 2022 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $870,444.36. O and M Fund, $160,115.24. Transportation Fund, $16,345.84. Port Fund, $5,010.25. For total all funds of $1,051,915.69.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Faves?
Yes.
Amy Pellen?
Yes.
EAs have it, motions carried.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental tax levy to pay the principal of and interest on outstanding limited bonds of the district.
I have a second.
Yes, or second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Faves?
Yes.
Amy Pellen?
Yes.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $6,850,000 of general obligation debt certificates, limited tax, Series 2022, for the purpose of altering, repairing, and equipping school buildings and facilities, authorizing and providing for an installment purchase agreement, for the purpose of paying the cost of purchasing real or personal property, or both, in and for the district, and authorizing the post-sale of said certificates to the purchaser thereof.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Faves?
Yes.
Amy Pellen?
Yes.
EAs have it, motion carried.
I move toward the base bid package plus alternative numbers one, two, and three in the amount of $3,036,700 per bid specifications for the 2022 air conditioning renovations at McKenzie Elementary School. Monarch Construction Company for an amount Monarch Construction Company for an amount not to exceed one million, nine thousand dollars. Helm Mechanical for an amount not to exceed one million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Shoreline Electric for an amount not to exceed five hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. For total McKenzie Elementary School project cost of three million, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I have a second.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk, please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Faves?
Yes.
Amy Phelan?
Yes. EAs have it, motion carried.
I move to adopt the participation agreement for the teachers retirement, adopt, I'm sorry, let me try that again. I move to adopt the participation agreement for the teachers retirement system supplemental savings plan resolution.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk, please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Faves?
Yes.
Amy Phelan?
Yes. EAs have it, motion carried. Move to conference items, uh, old business. Board members? Yeah.
I, I had one, um, week or so, two weeks ago now, um, we had a really interesting special meeting with the presentation from Atlantic Research. The presentation had a lot of detail, and we were fairly time limited. So I'd like to recommend that we spend some time at that at the next committee of the whole. I had some questions, some things that I just didn't quite understand, and we really didn't have a chance to discuss that, that presentation.
That makes sense. There was a lot of information there, and I know there's continual work which will be brought to the board and prompt conversation. Great. Any other old business? New business? Good and welfare? Yes, Ms. Schneider Faves?
I'm not even going to pretend to be here and stonewall this story. But I will say that we, this was, this was. I guess I just want to talk about this policy that we had to create based on the, the observations of Atlantic Research Partners. They observed parents disrespecting district staff. And um, I just want to say, I'm sure when I speak on behalf of all board members, that's absolutely unacceptable. And it really saddens me. And um, had I known I, you know, maybe this policy is long overdue, but it never, never dawned on me we would need it. Um, and so I just want to tell the district uh, staff, administration, like, I'm sorry, we need this policy, I'm glad we have it, and it is truly unacceptable to be disrespected by, by people in this community. And I hope um, this policy will shield or, or protect district staff moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah, and as a reminder, we'll, we'll spend some more time discussing this at the committee of the whole. We do appreciate the board's support in this regard. This is a policy that exists, we may need to re, review or revise it or spend some time talking with our employees about how to implement that policy, because you're right. Things sometimes can get heated, but we should always be treating everyone with respect and dignity, and our staff absolutely deserve to be treated that way, so thank you for your support of that.
On good and welfare, I had the opportunity to attend the League of Women Voters event for um, students learning more about civil government and watching how um, board members deal with topics from various types of board members and administrators. This year, we had a slightly smaller group because of COVID, but it still was a very interesting um, event to be able to talk with the students and hear their questions and give them a little bit better feel for what we do and what uh, all of those around the table do. So it was a good event, and I look forward to hearing those remain your part of that, that uh, process. I, I think this year we won't have the people shadowing us at the board meeting.
They're, I think they're working through how to make it safe and yet accessible for everyone. So I think we'll still do some interviews, whether or not they're able to come and fully participate here at the board meeting is yet to be um, fully planned out. But uh, it was a wonderful event, so glad to be able to offer it again, and so glad to see so many people throughout our community participate, so thank you for being there.
That's a highlight for the kids that do attend, they get to find out what, what those people do.
Right.
Thank you.
It was fun to be a part of.
I'd add, if anybody needs a little lift, watching the high five choir is pretty exceptional and good for the soul.
It was pretty amazing and so fun to see the students, all of them, performing and energized about their performance and the, the students supporting one another, the staff who, I was just so inspired watching them work behind the scenes to ensure that each and every student had their moment. It was just, it was really inspirational. And to be able to have an audience there, parents and family members and siblings cheering them on, it was, it was really, really neat. So thank you for celebrating that.
Hey. We have no further business, so I seek a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I move to adjourn the uh, board of education meeting for Monday, January twenty-fourth.
I have a second.
Second.
A motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk, please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Faves?
Yes.
Amy Phelan?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, and the time is eight seventeen.